Good morning, everyone. Welcome over again to the San Luis County Board of County Commissioners on this wonderful, beautiful day of October 3rd. We are calling this meeting to order, and I want to ask for a raise for an implication given by Commissioner Tony Haas, and the political leaders followed by Commissioner Luis Lopez. This meeting is now...
Dear God, thank you for another day and for the blessing of motion. Lord, you know we are not perfect, we fall short every day of our lives. Everyone, take this time to thank you for your mercy. Thank you for our help, our families, the roof over our heads, and the few hundred tables. Please bless our loved ones and keep them free and busy along this way. That's what we're asking of you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Roll call, Mr. Dora Caplan, Commissioner Luis Lopez.
I'm here. Commissioner Haas is here. Commissioner Luis Lopez.
Here. Approve of the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
No changes, Commissioner.
Thank you, sir. I will entertain a motion to approve that.
Approve of the agenda.
Second, Commissioner Luis Lopez. Yes. Commissioner Haas? Yes. Commissioner Luis Lopez.
Yes. I want to make an announcement. Later on at 10:00 AM, we have a public hearing regardless of where this meeting is at. We're going to be suspending this meeting, going into the public hearing to hear a couple of cases that we have in common. But having said that, we don't have anything on Section 2 in consideration of the minutes, so I'm going to jump into the reading of correspondence by the Commissioner of Community Reports. Commissioner Tony Haas, would you like to...
Commissioner Haas, you pause the meeting for a minute or grab some... Um, menu issues.
All right.
Since we apologize to publicize a virtual venue person.
Very good.
Very good.
No, thank you. Let me make that announcement once again and apologize for the technical difficulties that we had just a moment ago. So as I was mentioning, the, this board has two, two items for public hearing, so at 10:00 AM, we will promptly suspend this meeting and go into the public hearing. So having said that, we're going to go into now the reading of correspondence. Commissioner of Community Reports, Commissioner Tony Haas.
Thank you. On September 27th, I attended the Health Board meeting. I'm just going to hit on a few of the highlights because we have a number of states on that board. So, Corbin McKenna, working for the new public, the Public County Department, he helped with the Department of Public and County offices. And he suspected it would take about eighteen months to get that in, into the parishioner county. West Nile was located in the peripheral county. They have a utilized horse to drive. They also have West Nile, very severe, most towns have it. Monizuma and Lerner counties have the plate. And they kind of, the regressing period, the board is no longer a pan and then it's a pan and then it's more like a common board. On the 28th, CCI held their monthly check-in with the Colorado Department of Ag. And one of the, there are several items that they touched on. CSU is doing a study on agricultural type egg, agriculture renewable energy. So land in use for solar, well, they're actually going to be able to graze or farm in the heat of solar energy generation. And that's an experiment that's going on right now. Of course, I was going to be involved in that too. And on October 9th, Cambridge, where it stated that it's involved with a working group and that they would be leading, it was Thursday last week, the Ag Coalition that they had, that they had started to build with Matty Keen, to streamline trade and commerce and represent the farming model. And she was asked if shutdown was going to affect Colorado Department of Ag, and she said they have money and resources to get through the shutdown. It shouldn't affect any, except any kind of programs that have a federal laws that might slow that process down. And that was first. We talked about the farm bill program. We're going to continue on with the farm bill that we have now through this year. And we talked about the rule for introduction. And there is going to be a 10J rule that will be in effect, which will allow us to use whatever means that are deemed necessary at the time of the deposition, deposition of great. Also, they talked about the Knox Street Control that's been happening in some of our counties. And my question to them, is there any state funding that could be available to help us with that? They said there was a hundred thousand, but it was in this grant that was available. And that won't work very far, so they may need us to reach out to JBC or the Capitol and the Department of Budget Committee and maybe get some more of that Knox Street Control. On the 29th, CCI hosted a CCI Land Use Bill. Home Builders Association was there in the presentation. They talked about multiple class action lawsuits that are going around right now due to construction defects and all of that. And the party that built is liable is what they're pushing for. Hacienda Colorado also did a presentation, and it was on overcoming barriers to affordable housing. DOL was, was there, a representative, gave an update on the innovative housing strategies grant program created by HDB 221271, thirty-seven point seven million dollars to be awarded to local governments in their economy grant program, which has six point eight million to award also. I'm going to skip back here on the 26th of September, the Environmental Impact Assistance Committee, and Noah Reps, who I sit on that board, and one of the central themes was to qualify from grants that emergency meaning was importance of regional collaboration and planning in addressing housing challenges effectively such as regional planning or regions' housing transit, infrastructure, water needs are considered. A recurring theme that emphasized the housing strategy that catered to the reverse range of residents, also they introduced the notion that greenfield development might be more affordable initially due to lower infrastructure costs and long-term economic implications might be. Rick Garcia, who's been the Director of DOL, also announced his resignation. And then on the 29th, CCI hosted a work session regarding Proposition HH. CCI invited Senators Dean and Fenberg and Representative Rose and Lee to join in conversation. Senator Fenberg is a proponent and Representative Lee is an upholding. A robust conversation ensued. And just a little background on Proposition HH, it will reduce property taxes and retain state revenue and is the outcome of Senate Bill 23303. In the past, the lower property taxes owed allowed the state to keep additional money that otherwise be refunded to taxpayers temporarily, changes how taxpayer tapered refunds are redistributed and creates new property taxes, limits remotes of payments. Representative Sen, or Senator Fenberg stated, if the economy performs strongly, the nation would take billions of dollars from takers to grow funding for schools. The opponent, Representative Lee, was stating that, that funding schools wasn't the leading purpose of the proposition. This bill is about removing local control and replacing the state control. It has nothing to do with the taxpayer. This would allow the state to listen to takers, this would restrain the growth state budget. Fenberg then stated HH would allow counties that saw less than twenty percent growth to receive data back. Commissioner responses to that comment included, its lenders said that only two counties in the state saw less than twenty percent growth this year, Phillips and Butler County. Why is this state determining that twenty percent is the capital growth? And how did the state arrive at that percentage? This means the state will haul in 2.2 billion dollars in ten years. Representative Lee included stating this tax relief won't begin to offset the rising of the tax revenues. They will continue to soar. HH isn't needed central one away, it was recently challenged, already allows your counties to lower the numbers and, and property taxes if they see fit.
Thank you, Commissioner Haas and Commissioner Lopez. Thank you, and Commissioner Haas, we've done the proposition HH. We're already seeing in our budgets, which we'll be discussing today, the decline in revenue to the county if this passes as an possible services to our citizens, which is not a good thing. We have very low. So, these add on to that. September 19th, the RAV are ordering a handover from here to attend the Front Range Passenger Rail meeting at the Department of Transportation in Clavel and with Governor Holtz. We were able to meet with board members of Front Range Rail, members across the country. We were there to see the new technology for high-speed rail from the Department of Transportation and TSA all over the country. It was a wonderful afternoon. Didn't get home until I think about nine o'clock that night. But the technology on this new train is, is going to be amazing. We were on the platform as it rolled up and we pretty much talked a lot and there was no noise, no background, and it was going to be so much extra power. It was going to be the new technology. And we have a train dock to San Francisco now. We're testing out there. Probably it will be fifteen to twenty years to clear the city infrastructure, the state of Colorado, to adopt a type of train, but Front Range Passenger Rail is anticipating ten to twenty years for this train to come to fruition from Long Island, New Mexico. So I'm excited to be part of this organization, to see the next steps. As I mentioned in past meetings, Burlington Northern Rail is working with Front Range Rail, being actively coexisting on the Great Line, I'm not sure that, but, and if someone's online that's not meeting, who's pleased to be hearing some distortion or something of sound. So that was a, it was a wonderful afternoon. I did get to visit with the governor quite a bit of it, and also with his chief of staff regarding some missions we have with our former, moving in the future. Hopefully those conversations we're having, happening now with the county and the, my organization with the governor's office and energy. We'll be looking at this order rate to offset our increased power consumption is going to be used for stage three of our courthouse, updating the new heating and air conditioning next year, so we're trying to offset that. What we're waiting is to headway with that, also with our power providers, to reduce our carbon footprint. So I'm proud of that conversation and we're moving in that fashion. On the, the 22nd, that following Friday, the Front Range Passenger Rail did meet again for a summation of the meetings, the personal training testing and the business. It was really with the board, with the board, so nothing too exciting. On the 27th, as Commissioner Haas mentioned, we did have the Board of Health Meeting. I'm very excited with this organization as well. We have a green light with the Work County Commissioners to move forward with a new facility for the Work County residents, since we are a by-county health department, so that is working around it. And you start the, or the proposals for a new building. So we're just in the beginning stages where we do have the green light, the property is going to be a theme, and we met with the founder, McKenna, with the code and forensic LLP, and then we started on all the document work, and they did the loans and the forgiveness and all the USDA and everything, so we can use some stackable funding mechanisms to move forward with the, with the new building facility for then. Also, this, we probably need to look at our building here, Los Angeles County, we have a recent development, so we can't make sure that we don't have any damage on that facility. I don't know if that's occurred or not yet. But I would mention in that we will have to... As Commissioner Haas noted too, we do have the West Nile in the state of Colorado, and there've been one debt in the state. The county hasn't been spraying all summer of funding in the county, not in the city. The city chose not to do so this year. And we've got no West Nile debts in Los Angeles County. Thank goodness. And also the plate that is rambling in the state of Colorado in two locations now, so if you have none and now you've got two, it's a twenty percent increase for your positions in the C P D of G. On September 28th, the Council of Government Board members came together. We had our meeting there, and we'd like to inform the community that we have an interim executive director at this time, and we will be looking for a permanent executive director for the Council of Governments. That position has been changed, and was the Director of the Senate, and has moved on. Brian Lozzi is the interim director at this time, and we'll be soliciting for applicants moving forward. Also, with the Council of Governments, the Hope Building in Waterman County as well, the Senior Center is moving forward with the bids in the construction phase. There's some logistics that we need to do, some realities that are in the final station with that organization, but hopefully we will have that in the commission soon as well. So a lot of good things going on for Work County, relief organizations, and more to help, helping out some of the governments to, or to longboard. You actually toured the facilities of the Health Department, and I was in, I was pretty locked back in a fifty-year-old building. Now I'm going to go for a walk somewhere, but that Health Department building is, I really, it's, I couldn't believe I walked into. It's really an old building, maybe the size of our two offices, totally back here in the, it's just very, very small. Especially experiencing the COVID pandemic that we've been through, and I don't know how they kept up with that tiny facility there during the entire time. So it goes up to the Health Department employees, the Director of the King's Office, and all of our staff in the local county. And that is the end of my report. Colonel, turn.
Thank you so much. I made some of the, some of the points, I pretty much attended quite a lot of same meetings. I want to highlight just a tale on the Proposition HH, given the passage of this particular referendum that's going to be developed, San Luis County would, would lose in excess of half a million dollars. And that only tells you what services we would have to adjust and perhaps not fund one hundred percent. So I do a lot of research, I'm asking all of you out there to go read the pros and the cons of Proposition HH. And one of the estimates that has been out by several of the independent studies that we have out there, that this is going to be a ten-year asset that's going to be basically given the state legislature about ten billion dollars to play with. Ten billion dollars of your money, which is now being refunded through a taxpayer bill of rights, which since 1992, that passage of, that proposition has been in place. So at the end of the day, we're going for reducing property taxes, but you're trading that in for your hard-earned, that's your money that doesn't belong to the state. And so that money, they'll keep in exchange of lower interest tax on your property taxes. I thought that was very important to me. To put out there, on the 27th, I had a meeting with the Southern Colorado Opioid Committee, and one of the things that we're going to be awarding is hard reduction dollars for the nine counties that are within the region. The opioid pandemic is real, the opioid pandemic is creating so much havoc, and one of the things that we continue to hear is mental health. So we're hoping to put these dollars in areas that our counties are going to be benefiting from, from these services. And of course, it's going to be pretty challenging for us to have services at each one of the counties, but we are doing the best that we know how to distribute those dollars and provide the services that are so much needed in this part of Colorado. As Commissioner Tony Haas mentioned, on the 29th, the, one of the meetings that was of most interest to me, and to all of us, was through Colorado Counties Incorporated, was the land use and the housing meeting. What, what was attempted to happen in the last legislative session is basically to take as much authority from counties when it comes to permitting and regulating housing developments and also permitting of any type of a land use within the counties. And we, in a sense, were able to defeat that piece of legislation, but now what we're hearing is the same bill, it was only one bill introduced in the very last week of the legislative session, and now what we're hearing is the same legislation is going to be presented in 2024, perhaps it could be up to five or more bills. So we are, we're going to be creating a committee at the state one level to begin to work with the groups and be ready for testimony and be ready for, for what is happening at the state legislature. And one thing that we would like to prevent is that this local control belongs to your county, to be launched right here in your backyard. And it is our responsibility to, to basically oppose those measures, because what is good for Denver is not good for Los Angeles County. What's good for Mulder is not good for Work County. They cannot create one-size-fits-all for all of us here. And certainly, we will have to now manage housing developments, permitting of land use and so on, with the scripted mandates from Denver, and that's one thing that as your elected officials, we will continue to push back. And so that's pretty much what I'm going to cover on my, on my report. And so now we're going to go to elected officials update. I have a message from Assessor Amato, and she does not have anything to report, nor does Sheriff Navarre. Let me go to, do we have anyone from the clerk and reporter's office? Anyone from the treasurer's office?
Good morning, Mr. Knight. I have something to say for it. I thank you.
Thank you, and good morning. Anyone from the district attorney? Do we have anyone from the attorney's office? Thank you so much. And so now we're going to go to the next section. You know, a presentation by Mr. David DeTray, and then I'm joining this district update. And so, sir, please join us. Good morning and welcome. Good morning.
Is that all? Sure. Can I hear that? Is that wrong now?
Thank you, commissioners. As we talk, we want to try to come this quarter, maybe, of how we're doing as a district and how we're going to report. So happy to report at this time, we're fully staffed, which is better than most across EMS and emergency services. We are moving forward with changing from special district to a health service district. This will bring a lot more services that we can offer as far as community care, as something that we had on earlier was mental health, that gives us an opportunity to kind of gain actual funding stream to do that community care. So we are moving forward with that. We have, we have a lease assessment that will start next week. We contracted with one of our other districts in the state around Keller County and Wilbur Park to come down and do a lease assessment, so we're excited about that. We have finally, after four years, started the demolition phase on our new building. That is actually, right now, at least a week ahead of schedule, so that's good. One of the things with, you know, the supply chain issues, everything else, so we, we hoped that it was a six-month project, and now it's looking like it's going to be longer. We managed to speed to timeframes and things that are out, multiple weeks to get work for offshore power lines and such type of things. We've, we have Chief Carrero and I have talked, and we didn't really have any place for employees to go once they got to her medical. So we have, we have teams, advanced team teams, and her med. And there was no kind of movement to level change. So what we've done is we've promoted three operations super, shit supers that are on cars that will kind of help and take a little bit of stuff away for Chief Carrero and myself, so we can do some of the other stuff that we're going to do. So we have Motley Crue, Polkowski, Angelina Fattara, and John Velazquez, that's the last two support. The other thing is that's on our plate and definitely in our, in our sights is in what you're talking about, in what you're talking about, is the state taking more control of this, away from local government. One of the things is, is they're going to be, they're starting that state licensing for individuals. So we are engaged with that. Our, our physician advisor, medical director, Dr. Wall, he is also at all the state meetings, a huge proponent for us, and we'll be working that and continue to say that to him. So other than that, that's all I have for an update. If you have to answer any questions you all have.
I agree. Thank you, Chief, for being here for the update. Glad to see that facility under pressure, because I don't live too far from any facility by deep, to that district. So a question I do have, a serious note, on the transferring from an ambulance district to a health service district, I believe, and don't quote me, there might be some either legal or technical support or resolution of some sort that needs to come from the Work County Commissioners. So please have your attorney and counselor really look into that to see if you can transfer that, heading or title, I don't know, I'll ask our legal counsel as well, and if you pass through a special district for your funding manual on the taxpayer on hold, so I don't know if I'm sure if it's on, I think just to make sure you really looked into it. And if this is, I'm speaking out of turn, just forgot, maybe I'm misthinking something here, but I would, I would imagine so, that you changed your heading from a, the funding mechanisms and all that thing. There was a vote by the people for a taxing district or an ambulance district. You might really want to make sure there's some other maneuvers or statutes that don't have to be looked at. So really check into that to see if there's enough of a more, more time.
So it will become in front of you all. We do have an attorney firm in the state of Perry that has been very successful in that, and we have done, and we give thanks for that. Part of that is the in-sess time that needs to be done. And let me assure you guys, the reason we're doing this is to offer more and better care for the community and Los Angeles County. So with that being said, we have not come up with anything. There was an issue with a potential other health service district, and that's totally something different as far as what that health service district was actually going to do.
They do. They never got funded.
Right. So, but what we're doing is different. So that was to help fund the hospital and the other area, things like that, and we're doing something totally different. And we're doing something totally different.
The reason why I remember is my dad, he'd gone a long time ago, but I believe that was 20 years ago when he formed it. It was just in there as, it was in Alaska, it was 25, people came around for an election and then they were elected to this for dead health district, but they, on the same ballot and the funding mechanism, so to a gradual, gradual, that's what I, I remember it was a leading campaign on this, less convenient, gradual.
One, we did bring that up with our attorney. I believe it was two meetings ago, two months ago, with the attorney more determined and it talked about that and they felt that there was a knock, a conflict and that we didn't do it.
So one other last question I would have on that, thinking in my private business, Secretary Daphon, is that going to convene with the hospital, the salute, the service director, the community as well?
No, because the hospital or salute doesn't do home visits. It doesn't do mental health to the point where we could go to the scene and assess and do an actual virtual meeting with a behavioral health specialist and then get any of the help that they need right there. If you're adding services to the community, that's great.
Thank you. Thank you.
So I got to say, I'm excited for you guys and really pleased that this is happening. 27 years ago, I was in 2002, now 3000, the public building. And that was, that was a challenge, you know, to see where you guys are headed and how it's going to be raised. So you plan for 40 years in the future and how we sell it in the future.
Thank you. We're trying to do our due diligence and look forward to the future as Mr. Haas said and Mr. Lopez and Mr. Haas were both at our groundbreaking. And so what we've done with that facility, obviously without bringing the facility we're in, and what we've done is we already, we're already building in for the future and adding more bedrooms so we have to and we hope that Los Angeles County is moving upward and outward. And we have already put in place for at least one wardrobe and we have space to put more. So we're looking forward to that. As you said, 40 years down the road, we built that when we did the rural development grant, make sure that we're building that to a size that obviously people may say, well, that's more than we need. Well, it's not, it's more than we may need right now, but we have, we have the expansion difficulties so that we can add more services, obviously with the health service district and bringing on community care medicine. Our goal is at some point, and this is going to take some time, is getting to Teller County and Upper App, probably 12 or 15 years to really get on, on moving with that. And now they're moving into Park County. The revenue stream with the behavioral health is really paying for that, but we're not able to make money on some of the home visits and those kind of things. So that's kind of the way we're looking. When we do that, we're going to have to add staff and the community care mechanics that will run with the crews, but separately, separate vehicles, looking at transporting those behavioral health people to where they need to go, whether it's Springs or Buffalo or wherever, at the time of the services, instead of setting up an appointment or not getting in or going through more hardship and more. So that's our goal. It's going to take some time, but we're working towards that.
Well, congratulations, Mr. DeTray. One thing that I, first of all, the state certification process, that's been a long process that we have in the last few years. And you're absolutely correct. It was, we had so much opposition to basically centralizing all the certification at the service at state level simply because counties don't exist. You all are the, in a sense, the ones that run the businesses, provide the services. And I hope that the input that you gave on that particular process, what it means, because, you know, we just don't want to send everything to Denver. But my question is, as the opioid pandemic continues to rise now with fentanyl, Colorado being one of the highest overdose deaths when it comes to fentanyl, are you seeing that in Los Angeles County and then also on the behavioral side perspective, is there conversation about telehealth just in time as you pick up a patient that is actually having the trauma of A opioid and B behavioral health?
So at the time right now, we are doing some telehealth. The telehealth that we're doing is more for car accidents and refusals right now, the revenue stream about. The behavioral piece will come later. Obviously, the health service district, the state license through C P H U, those type of things all have to be included. Now, opioid crisis, absolutely, it's here. It's absolutely here. So we work with, not only Los Angeles County, but Waterford County as well to provide assistance for medical with their, with their warrants and stuff. We just did some things and it's here, it's right in our back door. So eventually, we're moving towards that. Like I said, it's going to take some time overall, but it starts soon.
Thank you so much for that information. And I, I would, I'd be welcome anytime. I think the public really appreciates hearing from all the public services that we have. So thank you, thank you for letting me.
You're welcome. Forward to the next update.
Thank you. Next, we're going to go to public comment and we have Ms. Elizabeth Kelly. Yes, please, welcome. I, I, we read the information that you have and what a worthy topic that we have in front of us, Commissioner. Good morning and welcome.
Good morning. My name is Elizabeth Kelly. I have a regional long-term care ombudsman. So I serve both American and Los Angeles counties with AAA at the Council of Governments. And we're here today to receive your proclamation. I understand you know what that will mean, but I just wanted to, I could introduce a couple of people. So we have today, so we're doing an eventish, and you know, I'm always impressed when I come to these meetings and see you have so much on your plates. And it is all provided and it's all related to quality of life in our area. And we certainly have our friends and neighbors who live in Long Term Care facilities who maybe don't get to see sort of what you do and how you serve our communities. So they kind of came here today, wanted to do that. Well, we're partnering to do an art show this year. We're going to have, it's a Friday, 1:00 to 3:00 at Trinity Rehab. And it's been really great because we've been working with the Arts Council, Trinity Rehab, which is Mr. Tony Alfred. And she and her group have come in to Trinity Rehab, formerly known as Trinity Man, to help residents create art if you're going to display in the vicinity. And I hope you can come, if you can stop by, that would be super. And part of that has been Ms. Priscilla Jenkins, who is the activities director at Trinity Rehab, and she's here today. Thank you so much. And kind of the star of our show, if you will, is our, Ms. Barbara Gresso, who is the president of the resident council. So I commented to her when we sat down, I said, this is kind of like resident council when we go to a question or two because we have the same kinds of, you know, rules of order and this part of our policy needs to order with our cattle. And we do discuss everyone in the business of the facility. So I just wanted to bring sort of that reality maybe to just a little time in this moment. So thank you and yes, we'd love to hear your information.
Amy John.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Mr. Joe Turner, who is our local Long Term Care officer. So now we're to, to work on this and serve our region.
Traditionally, we won't entertain communications back and forth very well at the comment. However, I may have a logic here. As a Council of Government Board member, I'm very proud of this organization, the AAA program and being a member of this group for overseeing some of the policies and procedures that they go with, protecting our seniors. And last week at our meeting, it brought us some very alarming concerns that I have regarding some of our elderly folks feeling maybe intimidated in these places possibly. And I just wanted to know, be as government members, elected officials, we're going to do our best to always make sure that our elderly are protected, feel safe, and the people like you representing them and Jim and all the folks that do this, taking care of our elderly and people. Thank you so much for sharing.
We appreciate that. Honestly, the people just might have been doing this for a long time, working with residents, you know, he gets to hear their stories. These are folks who, you know, they're very good. They have created, you know, contributed so much to our communities. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. And we'll go into the next session. We are going to read the proclamation. So thank you all of you for being here. Now we're going to go into, we don't have all. By the way, do we have anyone else online or in the room that would like to use this section for public comment? Here in that, we're going to go to section eight, we have no business, new business. Consideration of 2023 Proclamation of Residents' Rights Month. Mr. Dora Camp, do please read the proclamation.
National Long Term Care Residents' Rights Month, 2023 proclamation. Whereas there are 1.3 million individuals living in 15,600 nursing homes, 800,000 individuals living in 28,000 under assisted living slash residential care centers in the U.S. Whereas a federal nursing home, the Form Act of 1987 guarantees residents' liberty for rights of voting, maintaining their dignity and identity. And whereas all residents should be aware of their rights so that they be empowered to do with dignity and self-promotion and, whereas we wish to honor the subordinates of these citizens to recognize their vision of the geology, which reaffirm their right to vote, participate politically, and the right to have a say in their care. And whereas individuals who lives across the country, we celebrate the Residents' Rights Month as a theme, amplify, we'll amplify our voices as a decision, community of long-term care residents coming together to make their voices heard. And whereas there are more than one every individual in the long-term care communities in Los Angeles County, now therefore made it be resolved, Lord, the United Commissioners, unless you're by the name of over 20,000, is Los Angeles County Long Term Care Residents' Rights Month. But Lord, the United Commissioners, follow my signature.
Thank you, Mr. Dora Camp. I'm going to have the permission, my fellow commissioners, take a moment, our personal privilege to really say thank you to the person from the nursing home my father spent almost a couple of years. Jenkins, you were an amazing angel. I would go there daily and I can only remember what happened in those days when he was in his last, in his last chapter of life. So thank you so much. And this is very worthy, not only do we need to amplify the causes, we need to support its services. And Commissioners, pardon me for indulging on this moment of personal privilege, but I do believe that these residents and citizens, not only are they working to continue living in a quality of life, and my experience was that. So thank you so much and thank you, Mr. Dora Camp. And from that perspective, if there are no questions or comments, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to properly approve the generation of 2023 Proclamation of Residents' Rights Month. Second motion.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson. Yes. I, before we go into the next item, fellow commissioners, I was, I was going through the process of some of the documents that we have for public hearing this morning. There are a couple of questions that I believe might be, might require a legal counsel. So without infringing upon any other recommendations, I would like to take a moment to visit a counsel on one of the public hearing documents that we have in front of us so we can clarify a couple of questions. Unless we have any objections, I would then entertain a motion to suspend this meeting and go into executive session for the purpose of confirming with legal advice on this specific public hearing.
To suspend this meeting and go into executive session. Second motion.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
May I ask a question? I apologize. If I'm here for one of the public hearings, I know they're suspending it right now, will I be able to comment on that now or afterwards?
We are not, we are not suspending the meeting. We'll come back at 10 o'clock. We have that already scheduled at 10 a.m. So we will reopen that just a couple of questions that we have. So we are going to be, thank you, our counsel. Okay? We're going to be meeting under CRS 246424B, approving the county attorney for the purposes of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions. And this particular one is on a public hearing.